The elected APC, the elected board hires their principal, who is in turn then responsible for promoting educational excellence in every way, but also maintaining their budget for their leased space, maintenance and operations of their property. The APCs hold monthly meetings, open meetings, and participate in timely strategic planning sessions to continually chart their school's direction for the future. Our charter principals work collaboratively with their APCs and are fiscally responsible while all the time looking for unique ways to educate and enrich the lives of our ASD students who attend their schools. Each principal will now give a talk, a little bit of talk. We gave them each three minutes. We'll go A to W, and once we're done with A to W, we will entertain questions from the board. Also, before they begin, I'd like to thank Kathy Moffett, Carolyn Tix, our research analyst, and the principals for assisting in putting this report together. So with that, I'd like to invite the first three schools up, starting with Alaska Native, Aquarian, and Eagle.
I'm not so sure they're happy to do this, but I'm glad they're doing it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sheila Sweetser, and I'm the school principal for Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. What I brought to talk about today was one of our three goals for our school for the school-wide plan. So we have two, one for reading, one for math, and one for attendance. Our school, with the community and parents and the staff, and the principal last year looked at our goals and chose attendance to really focus on. So this year, with the help of CIRI, the CIRI Foundation, they gave us a grant, and we said that one of the really important things was to focus on attendance and to have children in school. So we really made a big deal for our attendance this year. So we made these signs, and our kindergarten teacher, and Dr. Bishop came over, and so we took a picture with her with our...
That could go district-wide.
Yeah, I mean, it's perfect. So it's less than eight is great. And then you can see that we put the CIRI Foundation on there. So then we also got a lot of incentives. So probably once a week, we say, what is our attendance motto? And we have a very unique school, and we do a whole school morning message every single morning. All 324 of our students sit in the gym every single morning. And so we have guest speakers, and we talk about values, the native values, and we really push for this. And so we said, with this, you'll go ahead and have incentives, which is, at the end of the year, you could be one of the winners, whoever has the best attendance, to get... Well, throughout every month, you have something going on for perfect attendance. And we have this amazing bulletin board, which is focused... This year was blueberries, and for every perfect attendance, you get a blueberry for your whole class. After every four blueberries, you get something. So we have gas cards for those families who are in need of them. We have movie tickets, lots of incentives. Every month is geared towards something. So now our new bulletin board for October just came up in its masks. And so every four attendance, you get a feather that goes on your mask. And it's really geared towards our school. So we are very happy with the way that things are going. Two weeks ago, when we just did the last attendance, we had 134 perfect attendance. So we are, you know, just really praising our students and really making a big deal of it in our school with our morning message every morning. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Bishop, thanks for having me. I'm Lucas Salzman, the principal at Aquarian Charter School. It's my seventh year this year at Aquarian. The time flies. In thinking about recapping last year for you, Aquarian completed its 20th successful year. We celebrated our 20th year last year. It continues to have overwhelming interest in the program with long wait lists at every grade level. We did a couple of... completion of a couple of projects last year and the startups of new projects. Last year, we wrapped up a two-and-a-half-year integrated technology project that we did as a staff, where we disbanded our computer lab to move our tech into the classroom to make it more authentic for kids and wrapped it around our learning in the classroom. We also, over the course of the last five years, our professional development really has explored 21st century learning and what those things look like for our kids at the K-6 level and trying to do that in a meaningful way. A couple of trips we did last year, we went to a 10-day workshop in Finland on international educational practices. That was very helpful for us as a staff. We also traveled to Chicago for Expeditionary Learning's 25th anniversary. They're a program that started 25 years ago, and they're the only ones to have survived the Break the Mold Initiative in the '90s, which you may or may not be familiar with. It's not all that important, but again, great takeaways for the staff and for us launching into this year. Really, a foundational piece that came out of last year was to develop a school-wide digital portfolio platform so that the kids can build sort of a seven-year look at their learning. And through that vehicle, also communicate better with families about what your kid's going to learn in seven years. So the portfolio is a template that the kids get in kindergarten. It'll start next year, and it'll have your whole seven years loaded into it. So parents can go through and look at what your learning's going to look like as far as, you know, reading, writing, math, project-based learning, 21st century skills over your career at Aquarian. And we're pretty excited about that. That's a partnership that we're doing with UAA. And also, it's a platform that Polaris K-12 has looked at in the past and is still using currently. That's it.
Hi, I'm Kitty Logan. I'm principal at Eagle Academy Charter School. Last spring, at Eagle Academy, started a new tradition after 13 years of existence. We honored our first kindergarten class, now graduating seniors. At the fourth quarter awards assembly, we organized a senior walk. Seniors were introduced during the assembly and presented with a candy lay. Now picture it, a little kindergartner giving a senior a candy lay. It was pretty special. Current students then lined our hallways and cheered and clapped and high-fived our seniors as they walked their halls one last time. We also held a reception afterwards so that the staff could reconnect with the graduates. We thought that was kind of cool. This is a sixth grader wrote this letter at the end of the year, testimonial how she felt to the staff of EACS. "My family and I would like to thank you for the last six years of education. There are many times when I thought you were pushing me too hard, but I soon began to see what I was capable of, and it excited me. Getting 100% on spelling tests encouraged me. My weakest subject math became my strongest by sixth grade. I'm looking forward to Mirror Lake because of the tools you have given me to succeed, such as respect for teachers when they speak and follow directions as given. I know I have gained the confidence to strive for the very best and to never feel afraid. Your focus on uniforms made me feel responsible. Many times, it frustrated me, but in the end, it made me realize that it was not about the brand you wear, but rather, it's about learning and sharing our knowledge together. I especially enjoyed tutoring the younger kids throughout my sixth-grade year. I've gotten to know a lot more students through this process, and also, I love seeing the students improve. Gives me great satisfaction to help students in a situation that I was once in long ago." And not to be outdone, my kindergarteners... This was overheard in kindergarten by my kindergarten teacher. Kid number one says, "He says he hates this book." And my kindergarten teacher replied, "We try not to say hate too much. You could say you really don't like it instead." And kid number three responds, "Yeah, hate is for horses." Thank you so much for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Family Frontier and Highland up to the table.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for the opportunity to share some information about my school. My name is Deanne Carroll, and I'm the principal at Family Partnership Charter School. We are in our 21st year of serving ASD students and really excited about some of the things that we've been able to do over the past few years. We currently have an enrollment of 684 students in grades K through 12. So if you can imagine, every single one of our students has an individual learning plan, and none of them are the same. So no student has the same schedule or the same types of classes. They all have individual ones, and so it's quite a challenge to kind of keep up with that. But we really appreciate the fact that we have such an amazing partnership with the district. We have moved into a new facility this year and want to really thank the district and operations in helping us work through all of the legal things that come with leasing a facility and making sure that it is safe for our students. Some of the programs that we have, we have started a new enrichment program to help some of our families. When you're homeschooling and you have maybe only one or two students, it can be sometimes difficult to have opportunities to do field trips or bring in authors or, you know, have video conferencing with someone. You know, parents aren't necessarily able to set those up. And so we have two teachers that are working with small groups of kiddos to do group activities to help kids have some opportunities to learn from each other and also to have access to experts and professionals within the community. Other than that, I think what we're really proud of is our strides and our graduation rates. We've increased our graduation rate from 53% in 2014-15 to 78% this year in 1718. And we're a little worried about what we're going to do this year. We have started to take a look at all of our juniors and seniors. We know we have a lot of work to do, but I have an amazing staff of five admin assistants and nine teachers who work really hard to keep our kids on track.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm Jerry Finkler. I'm from Frontier Charter School, and we primarily serve two diverse populations of homeschooled students. We currently have 210 who are traditionally homeschooled, and we have an additional 53 who are primarily secondary students with unique challenges. For example, and one of many, many examples, a student with a medical crisis who requires online curricula but doesn't have a parent who can... or who has much time to homeschool. So we're able to give more time and attention to those students. Last year, we were glad to enroll new students every month of the year. We enrolled 297 by the end of October and then a total of 422 by the end of the year. And that's a normal year for us. Eighty-one of the high school students who entered our program last year were credit deficient. Most of them don't spend more than a year with us. And so from year to year, the teachers and I have been trying to build a better mousetrap to support them. Some of them have plenty of support, but not all. So this year, what I'd like to share with you is the four teachers, just four of them, and I, developed a new initiative, and it looks like this. So the students, if they're willing to make a greater commitment to our school, and we ask them to, they sign on to show up every Tuesday for two to three hours, depending on their commitment and their ability. So when they come, we monitor their progress. We have them show the teachers that they work with their online classes. And we hold... it's a nice accountability feature that they don't get otherwise. They also are required to meet with an English teacher to show writing samples, to get help and feedback on their writing. And finally, and probably maybe the best, is that we get to know them a little better. So currently, we have 10, but as the school year goes on, we'll get more and more into our school. And the nice part is that the teachers put this together with me, and we are just really jazzed about that. So with that, I'm glad to be here, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
My name is Amelia Johnson. I'm actually not the principal of Highland Academy Charter School. Michael Shapiro is wishing he could be here tonight, but I'm honored to be here in his place to share our message. I've been at Highland for 16 years now. This is my 16th year. I'm sorry, no, 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 it's not my 16th year. It's my 13th year. Highland has been in existence for 16 years. And I have some students proofread what I have to say today, too. Very involved students. Growth mindset, blended learning, emotional... social-emotional learning, teaching the whole child, standards-based, competency-based, project-based, personalized learning. These are widely-used terms in education, and you can see all of these elements alive at Highland Academy Charter School. Our students don't necessarily come to Highland to own their education, but whether they're there for a semester or for seven years, they leave owning their education. They have a strong ownership. When students start at Highland, we give them a placement test for reading, writing, and math to ensure that they're at the appropriate level for those... for their skill set. We have many students who place right at grade level, and we're equipped to meet the needs of those who test above and below grade level. These levels aren't bound to semesters, but rather, students work through these levels by showing competency through a set of standards. The standards are checked on a regular basis for rigor and alignment to state and national standards, and we're currently right-aligned with Common Core. We have the flexibility to offer a variety of learning opportunities and assessments. Our teachers plan integrated projects in combination with traditional direct instruction approaches. Skills learned in one content area can lead to standards earned in other content areas. Teachers report progress standard by standard and activity by activity. And if a student completes a project or activity at less than a proficient level, they're given the opportunity to revise that with teacher feedback. Our students can articulate the relevance of what they're doing. I tested this out this morning with a group of seventh and eighth graders in social studies, and I was questioning them about the importance of learning about the Constitution. I was quickly schooled on the foundation of my understanding of my civic duties. The simple questions, "What are you working on and why is it important and relevant?" can be answered by our students on a regular basis in any classroom. Alternatively, students can create their own projects that meet standards. Sometimes, these projects grow from standards, but more often, students have ideas for learning opportunities that directly correspond to standards. We have a strong advisory program, and this is one of the things that I'm the most impressed and most proud of with our school. Our teachers are also advisors, and they act as academic coaches, facilitators of collaboration, they're social-emotional teachers, they're cheerleaders, and they're much more. Students set goals, take on new leadership roles, and work through a series of college and career preparedness standards as well as personal, social, and service standards. But please come see for yourselves. Schedule a visit. Our student tour guides are also our ambassadors, and they're ready and eager to give you a tour, and we're right next door. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll ask Rulka, Stream, and Winterbury to come up, please. And while they're coming up, I'll just point out to the board, I did not have the PIDEA principal come tonight because PIDEA is no longer Charter School, so even though they are included in the report.
Guten Tag. Ich heiße Christopher Barr, und ich bin der Schulelehrer von Rukashula. So, good day. My name is Chris Barr, and I am the principal of Rukashula. Rukashula is very unique. We are one of 16 German immersion schools in the United States, and actually, we're one of two that actually operates as a charter. I'd really like to talk briefly about the cutting edge that we have at our school about promoting German immersion, not only here in Anchorage, but also throughout the United States and the world. We are recognized, Rukashula is recognized by the German government. As a German school, we received a POSH grant last year, GOP exchange grants, which I had participated in. We spent 27 days in Germany with 15 middle-school students, and it was absolutely fabulous, as I'm not a native German speaker. It was really nice to see our kids go through the program that started there in kindergarten and just knock it out of the ballpark in Germany. It was really cool. But our APC is cutting-edge as well. We train annually with Norm Wooten to progress us through our strategic planning, where we want to be in 10 years. Also, we hired a German curriculum coordinator just recently. We just got our first German curriculum, which is really cool for our K-2 students. We developed a third partner school in Germany. So I went to Frankfurt and Fulda. Now we have Aachen, because we have so many middle-school students that are qualified to go to Germany. We hosted a German partner school last year of over 20 kids and two teachers. We also have a partnership with Amity that they send over German guest teachers. We train them how to be teachers, and they teach our students German. Also, we coordinated with St. Paul German Exchange... or German School. They came out, and actually, was watching how we provide services to our kids, which is really cool. So we're leading... I like to think we are the one that is leading the German immersion program. And also, I had the unique opportunity to go to New York to work with the Gerda Institute to expand German immersion, not only here in Alaska, but also throughout the United States. So thank you for your time, and as always, you are more than welcome to come to Rukashula. It's a great place.
All right, thank you. President Marset, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Bishop. I'm Adam Okelke from Stream Academy. I'm very pleased to be able to present twice this evening to you. So this will be a brief introduction to my next presentation. We completed our second year. In our third year now, we had 108 students for count period last year, and right now, I'm sitting at 151 to 152. So our growth from 75 in our first year to 108 to 150, I'm really happy about, excited about. We have a very active and supportive APC, many of whom are here tonight, and an extremely hard-working, dedicated, and engaged staff, the best staff we could possibly hope to have, and many of them are also here with me tonight. We serve East Anchorage as defined by Bartlett and East High School boundaries, and so we give a neighborhood preference to East Anchorage students, and our student body is very much representative of East Anchorage. We're very proud of that and dedicated to staying and remaining a charter school in East Anchorage. What we do is a three-pronged mission, a three-pronged approach. We provide project-based learning, experiential and outdoor education, and STEM-based, STEM-integrated learning. We've discovered that project-based learning is the umbrella over all of that, that what drives education at Stream Academy is project-based learning, and everything else we do, we work to incorporate into project-based learning. Examples are outdoor experiential education. We call Treks. About once a month, we take a full-day field trip, but it's an engaged learning opportunity where students do research, learn about their local environment, engage in the community, and it's tied to other things that they're working on. We do research projects where they're gathering data and presenting in real-world situations, such as a project we're doing in Girdwood currently, gathering foliage and doing a foliage moisture study. So our students are mapping the moisture level of the foliage in the Girdwood bowl over time and hope to present that, a five-year study on that. And we had our sixth graders present their renewable energy projects to the mayor last year, their ideas on renewable energy. We work to integrate STEM and engineering challenges across the curriculum and into everything that we do. Examples are, part of our students' regular schedule and regular day includes robotics, coding, Mr. Cleaver's rocketry class, which is really hard to get into. It's pretty popular, so you have to sign up early. Our students present their projects and their learning in public showcases multiple times a year. We have one coming up next Wednesday, if you'd like to join us, at Wayland Baptist University after school, where we reside. Our biggest challenge is facilities. We have an awesome landlord and a great lease agreement with Wayland Baptist. Very... work very closely with us. But at 150 students, if you walk the halls of Stream now, it's... we're over capacity. We're busting at the seams. So my biggest challenge as a principal has been to constantly seek opportunities for a permanent, long-term facility in East Anchorage for us. Academically, of course, I feel our biggest challenge is our proficiency in math and in language arts, especially in math. We're very much aware and want to continue to raise the bar. And so we've put... we early adopted MAP. I asked to be opted in when the district first brought MAP testing onboard, and so we're using MAP data to provide... to inform our instruction and provide intervention for all of our Tier 1 and Tier 2 students and really working hard to help our students increase proficiency and grow their learning. Thank you.
Good evening. President Marset, Superintendent Bishop, members of the board, thank you for letting us speak this evening. I'm Eric Anderson. I am the principal at Winterbury Charter School. For those of you that don't know about Winterbury, Winterbury is a Waldorf-inspired school, and Waldorf methodology is a... we are a K-8 school that we have kindergarten, and then, once kids reach first grade, they stay with their teacher from first grade all the way through eighth grade. And the idea there is to build relationships with the children based and understand their developmental needs and their readiness for things. And so it is a unique environment that children and parents can choose to have their children go through. We've had a lot of great things happen over the last year. This is my second year with Winterbury. We... last year, we had our charter renewal, and we're very excited to continue for another 10 years. I have a very dedicated APC as well, and they did a lot of hard work on that. And they're very easy to work with, in my opinion. So we also had a large expansion this last summer, 6,500 square feet added onto our building. And a big thank you to ASD for helping us out with that. They were great and held their... kind of helped us, pushed us through it, and created a new lease agreement that is much more easy to work with. In that expansion, it has improved our school greatly in the fact that we now have... we offer Spanish, grades 1 through 8. And we have our own Spanish room now. We also offer handwork, which is a unique situation where children study the fiber arts with our handwork teacher. Some in other Waldorf schools, they get into woodworking. We're working on that. We're not there yet, but so is children. And all the fiber arts are integrated into every teacher's thematic units in every grade. So whatever they study in fiber arts, or Spanish, or in music as well, they are... it's integrated with their lessons in their main classrooms. We also have a multipurpose room that has helped us with our professional development, and now we have a place-to-be, which is very nice. It's not in the entryway of our school. And we just recently had Jamie York, who is a 30-year veteran math teacher, come and spend three days with us and give us tips and tricks on how to take the conceptual math into the abstract. That is an area that Winterbury is working on, is their math. And we've increased a little bit this last year, and we are constantly assessing that and working on it. We are also currently in the process of improving our grounds through the grant that we have. We are adding more outdoor play area. Those of you that are not familiar with the Waldorf method of integrating children with their surroundings outside, 60% of our day is spent outside. So we don't have a gym. Our kids go outside for movement class or PE every day. We had two inside recesses last year due to icy conditions, and that... but they are come prepared every day. Science is handled outside every day, and we are lucky enough to be backed up to the APU trail system. And science takes place in that area, for the most part. And so our kids walk away with a very good understanding of the natural world and how it relates to them. And I have had some very good reports from high school teachers, high school science teachers explaining how well Winterbury kids are prepared for their classes. So with that said, that's all I have. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. And that is a quick end-of-year report of your charter schools. Do you have any questions from the board, for myself, or the principals?
Do any board members have any questions? I do. Nobody else does. One of the things I was looking at at the overall report, and I saw that there was the... looked like spring MAP scores. Is that something that's not being done in all the charter schools, correct?
No, they are not.
Okay. Which charter schools are using the MAP testing?
The ones we listed. I could just see a show of hands.
Oh, okay.
Who's using MAP?
Right, okay. Just... okay. And so what I saw was the 1718 spring, but did they take it in the fall? So what I was kind of looking for was growth, and I didn't see that. So I didn't know if this is... So, I didn't know if this is the first time you guys have used it, or?
Yeah, there should have been some growth data in there. So, I apologize for that, and I'll update that for you.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one other question I had, and you guys are doing amazing. Thank you. I mean, I looked at the stats, and things look really good, but there was one thing that really stood out to me as far as number-wise, and that was the students with one F or more in the Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islanders, and it jumped like 26%. And so, that was kind of an eye-opener to me. Any?
And this is in the school-wide report?
Yes, uh-huh. And it was the charter schools.
You know, and it's difficult, because each charter school is so unique. We really, I could really drill down and look at each unique charter school to see where the jumps are.
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind, I'd be, I'd be curious to know that, but everything else? I know that's the one thing I pointed out, but everything else is looking great. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
And just the, the mean score in the spring was given. We will share the growth records for you, as just reported to ASD as well as just all charters, but we'll get that. That's a good question.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, miss?
I'll try. This is more just for Daryl, maybe what the efforts are on the disparity in matching district-wide numbers for low-income students, or students of Black, multi-ethnic, Native, or Native, or Pacific Islander heritage for, I mean, they're just not proportionate to the rest of the district. Is there, is there a plan for reaching out to that, try to balance it, or make sure people know that those opportunities are available?
When I started with the district in this position four years ago, the board asked me what programs are working and why don't we replicate them, and which aren't, and why don't we eliminate them. Really, my, my report focused much more on the demographics, and really, what we see if we look at our lottery-only programs, and that's not just charter schools, but alternative schools or programs, is they tend to be lower socioeconomic, higher, lower diversity and higher socioeconomic. And so, I know that the schools in the district, we reach out, we try to do our best, but a lot of it has to do with mobility and parents being able to get their kids. If I'm a single parent with three kids, my kids are going to go where the buses go. So, we try, we try to work with transportation as much as we can. Really, we haven't tapped into that too much. We can, we can utilize transportation if the students live within the charter area, but, but individually, the schools do work on that, and they realize. The one, the one exception is Alaska Native Cultural Charter School.
Any other questions? All right. Guess we can move forward. Thank you.
Great. I'm going to get my props on, and while I'm going to get my other notebook, I'll invite Eagle Academy, Kitty Logan, I believe APC Chair Vanessa Hall will be here, anybody else that's on your team, charter school principals that aren't doing an end-of-year report, you guys can go.
And again, the board will be voting later to extend the charters, and that's why they're providing you pre-data and discussion, in case you had any additional questions similar to the board president.
So, I'll just do a quick intro. By state statute, charter schools have to renew their charter. They can only enter into a 10-year charter, and then it has to be renewed. If they choose to renew, which Eagle and Stream did, they have to have their application into the superintendent by September 1st. It then goes through an administrative review, which involves many, many, many departments in, within our district. We then meet with the team, give them our feedback, and the application is now ready for board review. So, what we thought we'd do at the work session is have Eagle present in Stream and then open up for questions from the board.
Would you like me to introduce my team?
Please.
All right. Well, you've met me. So, enough said there. This is Vanessa Hall. She is our board chair. She's going to be presenting tonight, and certainly will help her. We have two board members here also. We have Jennifer Bundy and Missy Timberlake. Missy is also a second-grade teacher at Eagle Academy. So, thank you.
All right. Hi. Thanks for listening to us today. It's on? Can you hear me better? Okay. Thanks for listening to us today. Let's see. Our first slide here has a couple pictures of instruction in the classroom, and kids doing a patriotic assembly, and then...
They'll just do it.
They'll listen to you. Oh, they'll listen to me. Okay. Well, thanks.
There you go. So, when you're ready to go on, if you just pause, then they'll hit the next one.
Okay. Do you want me to speak on this slide?
No, we've already covered that.
All right. Eagle Academy encourages academic excellence by integrating proven instructional methods with a challenging curriculum and high expectations. This is part of Eagle Academy's mission statement and the heart of our program. So, what makes Eagle Academy different? Consistency and continuity throughout the program. Each grade teaches the same curriculum and is trained in the same instructional methods developed for each curriculum. Each level's instruction builds on the previous level's knowledge, so having the consistency and continuity through all grades is really important. We also have standards-based report cards, so our report cards are not letter-grade-centered, but centered around mastery of specific standards that were developed for each grade. And parent involvement is expected at our school. We really want parents involved in the classroom, in the learning process, with homework. It takes a team, and we really expect the parents to be involved and work with the teacher and the principal, so that the education for every child is successful. Another unique aspect is emphasis on ideals of patriotism and good character. These are incorporated into daily learning through historical role models, daily words of wisdom, and also, learning these traits from adult examples in a setting where equality and mutual respect are the norm. We also have a uniform dress code, which you can see in some of the pictures throughout the slides, and we have smaller class sizes. Our homeroom class enrollment is capped at 25 students for kindergarten and first grade, and 26 for second through sixth grade. Our instruction is also unique at Eagle Academy. We use the Spalding Method for, of instruction for all subjects, which is a research-based, multisensory method of direct instruction. Our classrooms are a traditional classroom setting with forward-facing desks and students facing the teacher during instruction. Another component of our instruction that makes us unique is math and language arts leveling. So, to facilitate this, these subjects are given priority in the scheduling, and the whole school does language arts and math blocks at the same time with no scheduled pullouts. Our curriculum is also unique, and it's a proven, research-based, a back-to-basic approach. So, for language arts, we use the Spalding Writing Road to Reading and Open Court Reading. For math, we use Saxon. Science, we use Scott Forsman Science. And for social studies, we use Core Knowledge History and Geography to also help facilitate the leveling in math and language arts. Our specials of art, music, PE, and technology are scheduled in one-hour blocks in the afternoon. And then, we have some more pictures of kids in the classroom. We were told to keep it short and sweet, so you can ask questions.
Any board members have any questions? Okay. Sorry. Dave Donley.
Could you expand some more on the, on the part, aspects of your program that emphasize patriotism? What kind of things do you do on a regular basis that help involve the students with patriotism and civic responsibility?
Of course, I can. Each morning, we say the Pledge of Allegiance together, and you saw an example of our celebration for Veterans, Veterans Day in November. We usually host a luncheon, have a big school project there. Let me think.
I know some classrooms do different stuff around Christmas time. They'll do like a Beans Cafe boxes, and the kids help put that together. What else? Fifth grade does a tie, the no-sew blanket, send to donate to the, I think, is that Beans Cafe, too? Or a wake?
No. It's a, it's a church. It's a shelter.
Oh, it's a church. A shelter. Okay.
There's also different curriculum in the classroom, so some of the students write letters to veterans. In your class, though, they read a book with a historical picture, a historical figure like Abraham Lincoln and things like that, for second grade, so different of the classes do that.
Sorry, it's being recorded.
Do you want me to say that again?
Well, paraphrase.
Okay. So, different classes do add different things in their curriculum, writing letters to veterans, studying historical figures through reading books about them, that kind of things. I know most, in our younger grades, the students also learn poems, and they do the Star Spangled Banner, those kind of things that help bring that all in.
Student council.
Mr. Holloman.
Yes. Do you see growth in student population over the next couple of years? And if not, what's the constraint on the size of the academy?
Our constraint would be our, I'm sorry, our facility, our facility itself. We have so, so much space, and we're full. Well, we have 176 students, with 180 being our capacity.
And we have waiting lists.
Say that again, please.
We also have waiting lists.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's our building that is constraining us.
Have you got a spare building?
We're told we do, yes.
Dibs.
All right. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite Adam Okelke and Stream Academy Charter School up to the table, and while they're coming up, the, the process is the same for the renewal. Now, Stream is a little different there. They were on a three-year startup, so usually when a school, a charter school starts, it starts unconditionally, so they're, they're at the end of their three-year term. So, the way we, we have both Eagle and Stream set up is it will have tonight's work session. At the next board meeting, it is up as a non-action item, so if there are further questions or anything we can answer, we'll do that. And then, the following board meeting, it is up for school board approval. If it is approved, they get to do this all over again with deed. So, I'll turn it over to you, Adam.
Thank you. Is this close enough?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to introduce Whitney Diottre. She's the chair of our APC and one of our founders. And Laura Ashley Twiford is our language arts teacher and one of our founding teachers, the first teacher we hired at Stream. She's been with us all three years. And Scott Cleaver, who is one of our founders and on our APC, and is now actually a science teacher at Stream.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The mission of Anchorage Stream Academy is to empower middle-school students to be involved learners, critical thinkers, and engaged citizens inspired by the natural world. As I explained in my earlier presentation, we offer project-based and experiential learning with an emphasis on STEM integrated across the curriculum. We teach grade-level content standards following ASD curriculum maps, but we do it through an active, engaged, relevant, hands-on approach. We seek to take the content students should learn at each grade level in the Common Core-aligned standards and integrate those throughout all, all of our subjects in a, in a hands-on, project-based way, and when at all possible, also engaging students outdoors and with our community. We do provide grade-level courses, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so a lot of, one of the first things I tell parents is a lot of the day looks similar to traditional middle school. You have sixth-grade math, and sixth-grade science, and sixth-grade social studies, and so on and so forth. However, project-based learning runs at three, really, three levels at our school. Each classroom teacher seeks to take the content they're teaching and develop projects within, within their sixth-grade math class, or within their eighth-grade language arts class, and we have great examples of that, like Miss Twiford's Superhero Project, which is a really fun, really neat project for seventh graders in language arts. The next level is our teachers use early release time on Wednesdays to develop cross-curricular projects, often with just two teachers in two different content areas. So, an example I mentioned earlier, our social studies and science teachers work together on the renewable energy projects, which they presented at the mayor's office, which was really neat to see. And then, that third level is the broad, school-wide longitudinal projects that we either engage the whole school across all content areas, or a broader, more long-term approach to project-based learning, where students are gathering data in multiple content areas over a longer period of time to present that. So, our students explore topics through research, teamwork, exploration of real-world connections. They present their findings. A key piece of project-based learning is, is presenting a public product, and so, one of the things we've worked really hard to build on each year is public presentations and public showcases. I think we're up to four or five public showcases this year, which we're really excited about because our, our students get that opportunity to present on, on a larger scale and make that real-world connection much more meaningful. In each subject, we incorporate movement. We require that students take a five-minute brain break at some point in each class period, and I'd say 90% of those brain breaks are done outside. They take a quick trip outside, get some fresh air and exercise, and then students refocus, and they're ready to learn again. Our teachers do a great job of incorporating art across the curriculum, and the "R" in Stream is for research. So, again, in every subject, we have an emphasis on, on research. Another key aspect of our program, which Mr. Cleaver really helped us to, to bring to fruition last year, is we employ mastery learning. So, our student, our teachers developed a six-point scale, and we, we grade on a six-point scale, and we grade for mastery.
I don't understand that. What's a six-point scale?
We can explain that more. Is that our last slide? I think it is. Mr. Cleaver, would you like to talk more about our mastery learning model at Stream?
And if you could pull that mic closer?
Yeah. I would, I could probably even share this for them to pull this up, and I know the best way to, is there a way that I could share Google Doc?
I don't think so.
If we have access, if you give them access to your Google Doc, I mean, through Google Docs.
Can I just give it to you?
Share it? Are there any other questions why they're doing that? Does anyone have any other questions?
Any chance we can adopt a brain break every class? Just asking.
Stream would support that.
Miss Bishop, I mean, Mitchell.
So, I'm curious, with those brain breaks, do they, when you're going outside during, you know, for a five-minute brain break, are they just running outside without a jacket on? Are they grabbing their jacket really quickly? Like, logistically, how are you doing that? Or do sixth through eighth graders just not get that cold?
I'm going to let one of our teachers answer that.
To be clear, these breaks are structured time where students are allowed to sort of get their movement out. For example, I play a game in my class. It's like a small game of tag outside, just to get a break from the academic rigor of our class. This is especially helpful in our block classes, where students are sat down for 90 minutes working on an individual subject area. So, we'll say, all right, it's break time, 10 minutes, put your coats on, let's go outside, let's go walk around the trail, which we've adopted. It's behind our school. We take a 20-minute, 15-minute walk to let them move around and refocus.
We do have PE, and similar to Winterberry, we don't have a gym, so all of our PE classes are outside. We are directly adjacent to Muldoon Park at Wayland Baptist University, and a short walk to Chugatch Foothills and Scenic Park, and so, our PE classes will access those parks. We actually adopted, you can adopt a park, Stream Academy adopted Muldoon Park, and so, we do a lot with, with that park and integrate outdoor movement and activity in a lot of ways.
So, are we ready?
Sure. And there's a present button up there. There we go. So, years ago, the Anchorage School District brought up Rick Warmly as a, as a presenter for us, and Rick, if you haven't read his work, pretty innovative in assessing student learning, working with students and teachers to come up with effective ways to, to assess students. When he came up... When he came up, I was fortunate, Ms. Diottre and myself, we were on the same team, working together, and our team at, over at Vegas Middle School, we jumped completely on board. We, we went into the water and bought his books and we read stuff. We had him come up about a year later. We had lunch with him and we spent the whole afternoon learning his approach to learning. So, what's resulted is what you see on the board here. This slide is what we presented our back-to-school night. And if you take a look at that for a second, it says, "Are you okay with that grading scale?" And we let parents take a look at that for a little bit, let students look at that for a little bit. And if you go ahead and hit the next slide there. And it takes a little bit to look at that. The one on the right, that's the one I grew up with. A little bit of a disconnect there. We're working with middle schoolers. And if I have a child, let's say they're out for whatever reason, or they've, they've totally bombed out on their schoolwork and they're finding themselves at the bottom of that red column in a standard scale, a standard assessment model that we're all familiar with, that child has to do an awful lot of work at a hundred percent and above just to get up to the level of a D. And for a lot of our middle schoolers, that's a huge mountain to climb. So, if you go to the next slide there, our system looks like the one on the left. It's a, excuse me, it's a six-point scale. The bottom twenty percent is if a child didn't do the work. There's no evidence of any sort of learning that's gone on there. And it progresses all the way up. And we have a, a standard rubric that's in all of our classes that explains, you know, what those levels are. If you were to look at our grade book, go ahead with the next slide. First off, we use our, our grading is used for three things: making decisions, providing feedback, and documenting progress. Okay? You're going to find two types of work in our, in our grade book. You're going to have "MAs" and "PAs." If you go to the next one. Prac- PA, a "PA" is short for a practice assignment, and MA is short for a mastery assignment. "Pas" and "MAs." Kid can look right in there and see what it is. Practice assignments are where the learning occurs. Mastery assignments, that's a showcase of the learning. That's the final. That's like if you are, like there, we got band practice. You got to practice, you got to practice, you practice. That's where the learning occurs. We're recording that formative assessment as we go along as practice assignments. And then finally, they have the big concert. That's the mastery. That's what's at the end. That's the showcase. Okay? Practice assignments, there's either zero, five. You either did it or you didn't. If you want to get better, you're going to do the practice work. And we're going to give you feedback on that work. That's where the learning takes place, are those practice assignments. And then finally, at the end, you have masteries. It's either going to be, it's going to be on a scale from zero to five. That's where we'll have a rubric that will be developed, depending on, you know, it's going to change a little bit class to class, but it'll determine where you are in that ranking. Looking in the grade book, masteries are eighty percent, practices are twenty percent. And this is what's, this is what you'll see in all of our classrooms, supposed to kind of explaining that. It takes a lot of stress away from middle school students who are completely stressed right now as it is, just being the age that they are. They know when they get a, a mastery from us, a test from us, number one, if they've put in the effort, they're going to get the opportunity to retest. They get a redo. And if they mess that up, they can do a redo again. There's going to be some sort of intervention in between there where the teacher and the student get together and relearn the material that they didn't get. But if I know I can redo this test, it's not just a one-and-done, that's a load off of my twelve-year-old mind. And I'm going to be a little bit more receptive to, to taking these mastery tests.
Thank you.
I don't know if that-
Mr. Donnelly?
Did that help any-
So, there's five levels there, but there's a zero, so it's, it's called a six-point system because the zero counts as a-
Yeah, and that's, there's, and that would be the, no evidence of, nothing was turned in. So, I can't, I mean, I can't assess, I can't give any feedback on that because, for whatever reason, there, nothing was turned in. There's no evidence of any learning that's gone on there.
Okay, so, when they bring home, do they have report cards? And when they come home with a report card, if, if they were at the top, they'd be getting a five? Are those the actual grade, are they numerical grades like that?
Five.
Okay.
Yep.
Those, those grades still equate and align with traditional letter grades, so they would still come home at the end of the quarter with an A, a B, a C, a D, and F.
Okay, so they don't come home with a numerical grade, but they come home with a, a letter grade that relates to those numbers?
Yes. We still assign traditional letter grades. We just use a different, a more equitable scale number system.
Those assessments, those masteries that we're giving too, they're also much shorter, but they're more frequent. Rather than taking a test that is going to be forty-five questions long and it might hit on six or seven different standards, we're going to take those things and break them out in just maybe six or seven smaller units. It, it makes way more sense to me that if, if a student is having difficulty with standard two-point-two and it's part of a huge test where two-point-two, two-point-three, two-point-four, all these standards are mixed together, let's disaggregate that information and make smaller chunks for these students to do. It makes it easier on me because it's going to be a very short test. It's going to take ten minutes. It's easier for me to grade and I can get immediate feedback on that. And it's also not nearly as daunting for a twelve-year-old to sit down there with something that's six or seven pages long, like, "I'm going to spend the next forty-five minutes to an hour on it. I know it's going to be very quick. I'm going to get immediate feedback, and then there'll be another one next week."
So, if, if I'm understanding that six-point scale accurately, then you've got zero, you've got an F between zero and twenty, you've got a D between twenty and forty, and then a C would be between forty and sixty?
Right, so, that would-
Right, it's not either one of the, oh, it's over there on the left. Yeah, okay. So, if they scored sixty percent or lower, I mean, between forty and sixty percent, that equates to a C?
So, and that's, that's like the hardest thing for our family units to understand. When you look at this, you need to look at the grade that's associated with it. That's the rubric that goes with that grade. That numerical number is there because we have to make it fit into Q. So, when you're looking like that, a sixty percent and you're still getting this grade, that's not, you have to look at the letter grade. That's assigned. That's what's showing where that child is learning on that standard.
And to be honest, that was one of the things that, um, we had to do a lot of teaching for parents. Students adjust to that very quickly. It's the parents who grew up in the traditional system, which is all of us, that have a hard time adjusting to the percentage.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Well, I just have to say, I was over there last year. Um, I was asked to come over for a debate that the students were having on, uh, changing start times, and so it was quite interesting, let me tell you. But, uh, I definitely appreciated, uh, being over there and, and meeting with the students and staff, and, uh, thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to invite, we, we do have two weeks before the non-action items, so I'll, on behalf of both schools, invite the board to come out, visit, and see what they're all about.
We have a, a student showcase on, uh, next Wednesday at four o'clock, at four PM, so-
Everybody's having something next Wednesday. Thank you.
Time of the year.
Yes, it is. Thank you. So, does that conclude?
That concludes Charter Night with the Anchorage School Board.
All right, well, I enjoyed that. Thank you.
Madam President, um, because, uh, there were two renewals, um, and we just had, uh, thought there might be more questions, so we left time, so we, we don't have a scheduled time right now, so, but that's all yours.
Okay, great. Well, then what we're going to move forward with is new business for the board, and thank you, Charter Schools. I enjoyed, um, it's always, uh, good to hear. Um, so, at this time, new business for the, uh, school board members. Does anybody have any new business they would like to bring up at this time, uh, to discuss? I know, Mr. Donnelly, you had mentioned something about, uh, the value of Alaska Association of School Boards. I don't know if that's something we want to pursue, or I thought I'd throw that out there just because it was mentioned last time.
I don't think I mentioned, thank you for the opportunity. I don't think I brought that up at the last one. But I did agree with your contention that it's pretty dramatically unfair the representation our students get per, uh, uh, per, students per vote we have in that organization versus any other school district. Very dramatic, uh, discrimination against the Anchorage area school's student body.
And so, we do have two applications that we'll be putting forward for, I think there's seven seats open. We're going to put two applications forward, and, um, I'm going to have a conversation with Mr. Norm Wooten and just let him know, um, I, I think he knows already, but I think I'll just express to him why we're doing this and, and, uh, what our reasons are before, uh, behind submitting two, uh, board member applications. Yes, Ms. Hildy?
How many seats are on it, and is it just the two that we would have on it?
There are fifteen seats on the AASB board, and there are fifty-two or fifty-three districts in the state. So, they really do try to, you know, depends on who submits their names and how many people there are for the openings. And then the members at the annual meeting will vote on who, who gets appointed to the board. Are there fifty-two or fifty-three districts in the state?
Fifty-three, but one is Mount Edge.
So, we're just one out of fifteen in most years, and this year we'll try to be two out of fifteen?
Right. And, and I think we're doing that because of the, our population versus, you know, other school populations and, um, the size of our district.
What would the proportional number of seats be, do you know?
We have forty percent of this, you mean, how many students do we have in, uh, we have forty percent of the state's students, or how many?
There's approximately a hundred and thirty thousand students in the state, one-twenty-six to one-thirty, and of course, we have about forty-eight thousand, forty-seven, five.
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Last year, I actually broke those out, and I could try to dig that out again. The ratio, the, you know, the number of students per vote that we get versus the others, and I'll try to get that to you.
We have thirty-six percent of the, of the students in the state of Alaska.
Okay. Do I think two members will get elected? No, but we're going to put two members in. The, uh, and there, was I correct in there's seven seats open?
I'm not sure, sorry.
Okay, for some reason, I was thinking there were seven seats open, but I'm not sure about that either. Okay, yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Just talk here.
Mm-hmm.
There were a couple of facts that got out there in the public sector over the last, uh, two weeks that, um, I was concerned about, that, uh, one was, um, about how the district could benefit from electric buses. Um, I think we discussed this about two years ago when we did the leasing renewal, and the cost was quite, was like over four hundred thousand dollars a bus for an electric bus. And then we have a district that has some distances involved that the battery capacities just weren't conducive to us going to electric buses. So, it's one thing to just say, "Oh, this is a great idea," but we've actually looked at that and it's not, doesn't fit with our school district. So, that was one thing that I heard for the last two weeks. Then another thing I heard was that, "Why don't we just go with a two-tiered busing system rather than a three-tiered busing system, and that would solve all the school start time problems?" And we'd examined that, of course, also, and found that a two-tiered busing system, I'm just trying to remember, was, it was about a ten million dollar- Yeah, nine million, okay, I was off by a million. It was a nine-million-dollar cost, uh, effect of going to a two-year busing system, a two-tier busing system, so that suggestion had also been examined and found to be quite expensive and costly. So, both those suggestions, while they made sense, had been actually, the, the impression was the school board had never even looked at those things, but we had studied those things and came back with the analysis that they were both quite expensive and, and outside our budget, uh, availability within the budget, the money that we had.
And I can just say that, um, I think one of those questions came from, um, because of the, uh, the meeting that the Muni had with the recommendation for the new sites for the bus barn. Uh, there were quite a few individuals there. I was there, and a lot of questions about our, our buses came up. So, I think that's where that resurfaced again, so.
I, I suppose this might fit better under committee reports, but, um, at the Municipal Budget Commission meeting, there was a, um, a discussion, uh, I couldn't be there in person, but I called in for it. And over the past couple of weeks, I'd heard two (sigh) news reports that portrayed things different than I think were actually accurate. One news report said that the bus barn needed to be moved because the existing barn didn't have enough space for buses to turn around properly, and, and I had never heard that before. I checked with our, our, our administrators and found that wasn't true. The second thing I heard was that the bus barn needed to be moved because the buildings were forty years old and needed to be replaced. And I, once again, when we toured the bus barn, things seemed in pretty good shape there and things were working, and we don't need to move it because the buildings are forty years old. So, those were both facts that came out in the last two weeks that I thought were inaccurate also.
And I shared at the bus, I still call it the bus barn, um, I shared at the bus barn meeting that the only reason we are moving is because the Muni has contracted with this developer, um, to build a grocery store and condos, and they're building the new health center. And so, the space that they were going to move us to didn't meet the requirements that we needed for the bus barn. So, that's the reason, um, they are looking, uh, for other sites. And they did do a site, as, as we saw at our last, uh, board meeting, a, uh, site study, and there's five sites there. Uh, one of those is over there by Benny Benson, and one of the things that didn't come out was that they would be putting a, uh, road right in the Benny Benson parking lot, which did not come out at, uh, our meeting. Uh, so, I tried to make it very clear that this is an assembly decision, and as a school board, we just provide them with what we need to be able to operate. Do you have anything to add to that, Dr. Bishop?
Sure. Madam President and, uh, Member Donnelly, I, uh, during the superintendent report, I'm, uh, going to update on those things as well and how we are, um, although all this information is publicly accessible, the board has discussed it even upwards of two years ago, now that things are coming to fruition, um, everyone forgets or makes up new social media interest facts. So, uh, we are going to have a landing site on our board, and I'm going to share that during the superintendent report of all the hot topics, so that then we could just readdress, we can kind of update ourselves. Uh, in the board message last Friday, I, I resent out the electric bus information. Uh, we'll go ahead and post that there. But all, all of this information, um, you're right, it was two years ago, uh, that it was, it was brought up. And additionally, on the electric buses, cities that are now moving to electric buses, they actually are doing so by a federal grant. School districts are not eligible for that grant. So, that's a big kicker too, and the buses, you were right on, they were a little bit shy of four hundred thousand dollars each. Yes?
So, I'm sure there will be meetings popping up around town, but I just found out, I'm trying to, I can't get my email on my laptop, so I'm looking on my phone, um, tomorrow night, apparently, there's a meeting at six o'clock, I think, at the Botanical Garden with community members who are upset about that potential location for a bus barn. So, um, you know, these things will be popping up. If anybody wants these details, I can send it to them.
Well, and one of the things that came out of, of this presentation that they gave was there's five sites. One is over at, uh, Scenic Park, which was kicked around last year, and according to members there, uh, the mayor's promised that that won't happen there. The other one is by Walmart, um, and Walmart owns that land, and it's contaminated, so it would have to be decontaminated. The other site, the third site, is in a, uh, Parks and Rec, so it can't be developed at all, but that was one of the recommended sites. And then the fourth one was over here by APD. However, it's wetlands. The wetlands would have to be taken care of. There would have to be a tunnel built over a trail there, and so, I think what everyone's concerned about is the site over there by, um, Protonicle Gardens and such as the least remedial spot. And so, they're afraid because the developer only has so much money, um, committed to this, that there will be more money needed if they put in another site, and who will pay for that? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Well, at that Municipal Budget, uh, Commission, it wasn't clear to me the path forward we have before us now. It seemed to me we're, the, the report was they were down to the two sites that you just very accurately described. But is it going to be the assembly that chooses one of those, and then they bring that back to us? to us? Is that how you envision this moving forward?
December 10th, I believe, is going to parks, or planning and zoning, where people can testify. Planning and zoning will submit the recommendation to the assembly and the assembly doesn't get any input from us, they just make the decision. And so they vote on it that night and can also hear public testimony. But, you know, our requirement is just that it's a space that we are able to operate out of. So anything else? I did have one thing when I was reading several of the reports that were given to us and I just see how other board members feel about this, but I'm wondering how many substitute teachers we have that are filling sped teaching positions and math and science positions that we can't fill? So I'm wondering how many long-term subs we have that are, that are actually filling in in those positions. I think it would be good to know. Ms. Hildy?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
A few, maybe two months ago, I asked about Alice alerts for students with a hard of hearing, especially when teachers are hard of hearing. Do we have any update on, and then whether there was any delay for sped students at Denali Montessori and being able to respond? That I just, just wanted to know.
I, through the President, I can share on Denali, there really wasn't, the students were, were in school already and in their classrooms. But I will have to check, our alarm for our fire alarm, if that is pulled, has a light. So that would be, but if, just over the announcements, so if it's an announcement that says lockdown without pushing that light, basically it's students in the classroom who can hear other teachers who are next or aides that are helping support that. So we'll, we'll find out a process, but it is school to school based on whichever disabilities are at schools. And it's really looked at individually because some are medically fragile, some are wheelchair, some where they have devices in the classroom that actually support kids by covering their ears because the loud noises would have the opposite effect. So those things are considered when students are in individual IEP meetings, but your question was really based on the staff. So the student part, we feel very confident about, it's literally addressed in writing through an IEP. But we'll get back to that answer in regard to when a lockdown is called for a drill or an Alice alert. What happens generally, I mean, just in the effect of it, because I've been in several, there is someone who is, checks that out to ensure when you're heading down that you just get into every single classroom. So it's very quick and different and the doors are shut. So I'll, I'll find out. When it actually works, there isn't this, there, there isn't a flashing light like there is for a fire alarm. But if you needed to, within a school, if you weren't sure, you would hit, you know, we'll try to get some kind of signal on the buildings themselves.
And my other concern on there would be, you know, that person who goes through the hall, like if they're not there, right? So if we have it so person dependent, that could, I'm just concerned.
Part of the Alice, just so you know, is when you do shut your door, you kind of look and you grab anyone who's out there. If it's a true, whether, if your room is across from the bathroom, you know to say there's not a locked door. That's part of the practice is to grab kit, any kit, it doesn't matter who they are, if it is a lockdown, you're pulling them in and shutting it down, so. It, it isn't one person, just so.
Mr. Donnelly?
So I anticipate we're going to have a fairly long meeting tonight, so I want to take this opportunity, I could raise a few other things that I've been thinking about.
Sure.
One is, as we know, in Tennessee, I believe, and in Florida, they've adopted some pretty strong statewide policies to promote reading proficiency and their target being, kids being able to read well by third grade. And I think where, I'm concerned that where we're at now as a district is that we're kind of the opposite of those, those national trends. And in that we, the district seems to want to move kids on even if they're not proficient in reading in the third grade. And I think we ought to be taking a hard look at that because I think that's a, in addition to our new reading curriculum, which I have a lot of hope for, I think that's another real serious factor in making sure that, that our students are going to be proficient with their reading, whether they're being advanced without those reading skills. Because as we know, the tendency is to learn what you're required to learn. And if families and kids know they're not going to be moving on from the third grade until they're proficient with reading, I think that's going to be a huge incentive for greater efficiency by, in the third grade. And I think where we're at right now, the school policy is, is kind of the opposite of that. And so I'm starting to think about that and thinking about whether really that's where we want to be. We're going to learn a lot soon, I think, in Tennessee and Florida. Is Tennessee have that, Dr. Bishop? What kind of results they're getting in their reading proficiency and trying to achieve that in the earlier grades from those? Another issue I wanted to raise was switching from reading to math. When the district went to Go Math, it seems to me it was a response to Common Core, trying to have a math curriculum that fit within Common Core. And I asked this question last year and really didn't get to the bottom of it, but what I was asking last year about Go Math was not somebody asks what it is, is whether it's worked. And I'd be very interested in seeing what are math scores, if there's any comparables. And I know we've had changing testing mandated by the state and the federal government over these series of years, so it might be hard to get a comparison. But I'm very curious to see if Go Math is working better than Saxon Math or not. Because before Go Math, we had Saxon, there might even have been something else in between Go Math and Saxon. But I'm very curious if it's working better or if it's not. And if our math scores aren't getting better or maybe they're going down after Go Math, I'd really like to know that and do a reevaluation of whether going back to Saxon Math and, and might be something we should think about. So I just wanted to throw that out also.
Through the President to Member Donnelly, actually, the President has spoken to having an assessment update, not only on the academic side of the House, but also the affective side with the connectedness survey. And we are preparing that and, and ready to come to the board when, whether it's at a board meeting or a work session when it fits in. We've just had full ones with our charters and things. But we'll be ready for that. And then what we can add is what are the inflection points? When you study data over time, say 10 years or 15, however far we need to go back, we would look at what were the inflection points? Did a state testing change? Did our curriculum change? Did some professional development come in? You know, we will look at the history of ASD and what has occurred. And we could put those inflection points in so that there would be some understanding of, you know, what has happened over the last 10 to 15 years. The data are there, again, they will be in statewide scores. 15 years ago, it was SBA, Student-Based Assessments, or Standards-Based Assessments, then the AMP, Alaska's Measures of Progress, and now the PEAKS. They're all very different, they're apples and oranges, but at least we can know the standings. And the prior two, actually, the SBA was literally based off of different standards. So, but, but we'll share all those inflection points of what happened as well as the data so that the board can see that. In addition to what Member Marsette had requested to bring forward, the connectedness survey with the safety items and things like that. We, just let us know and we will, we will package that and, and be able to share that.
Mister, I'm going to give some, do you need a follow-up, Dave, or?
I just had one more thing, but we could, we could discuss that one if you wanted.
No, 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 go ahead.
Of course, we had the, the shooting this last week in, in one of our school parking lots. And I hope that the prosecutors take the existing laws that were violated by that individual by bringing that weapon into our parking lot seriously and don't plea bargain it away because the public needs to be educated about what is and is not acceptable as far as bringing firearms onto school grounds. And so I would hope that they take a very serious and appropriate look at what laws were violated there and not take it lightly at all. And so I just wanted to mention that because occasionally there's the, the incentive to bargain away, you know, to not charge certain crimes even though they were committed. And I would hope from a public education point of view that it should be very clear that there was, that was a serious violation.
Mr. Holloman and then Ms. Mitchell.
And actually, I was touching back on the earlier topic. I think I heard a request for retention rates. If we could get that broken out by grade level, I think that's, that would be something educational for us.
Ms. Mitchell?
So on a totally different topic, I'm just curious, I know that Bree's law was, Bree's law was passed and there was not money that came along with it for implementation. I'm wondering how, have we, are we just implementing it? This year, it started last year, right? So I'm curious how it's being implemented and I'm also, the reason it's kind of top of mind for me right now is I'm just hearing reports of the first few dances in the high schools. And I feel like those two topics are very related.
Madam President, we can share on that. And we do have curriculum here in ASD, it was implemented at the beginning first last year. Since there was a bill that the governor signed in regard to Bree's Law, it's being, not officially referred to it, but subofficially referred to as Bree's Law. Indeed is actually giving ASD, we're creating videos with Bree's parents of speaking about it and, and really having more engaging curriculum for our teachers to be able to have those talks in their class as well as study guides to the videos. So it's, because it is a very, it's a difficult subject to teach if you're not, and if everyone's supposed to teach it, you have to figure out how to ubiquitously get it to students because it's the state law. But Melanie Sutton, our coordinator, is working and we are receiving, I confirmed from Indeed, the funds that we need to make the videos and the additional pieces. They did put some money towards it and ASD received it because we're kind of ahead of the curb and Mr. Moore requested that we assist. So financially, we'll be able to put more engaging. We have the curriculum now, but we receive feedback from the teachers that it's, it is difficult, it's, it's a hard subject. Therefore, we said, you know, how do kids learn? How do, what makes a difference? They're the YouTube generation, so we decided, let's use multimedia to assist our teachers in, in this response. In the elementary and middle school, those parts are really done by health teachers and, in the middle school. But at the high school, not every child takes health at the same time and you need to have it twice a year at least, if not four times, it can go up to four times each year in ninth and 10th grade and then 11th and 12th, you know, during that, those two years. So you couldn't use a health class for it and so, and we don't have enough counselor, I mean, not everybody sees a counselor. So in some buildings, it's different between social studies teachers and I believe, yeah, just a different kind of social. So what they're doing is creating curricula that really match what teachers have asked for. But good news is, just this fall, confirmed, actually during the safety meeting, confirmed that, that they had at the Denali Center, that Michael Johnson was passing that, those funds on to ASD to assist. But it is the purposeful to be more engaging, to support our teachers and being able to deliver the curriculum and feeling comfortable and secure about it.
Does anybody else have anything else? Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you for indulging me. I just wanted to try to get these things out of the way before tonight. I wanted to give a little update on where we're at with the school cost differential study potential with Iser. Assemblyman Trainee brought this up again at the municipal budget commission. There has been, municipality has set aside $145,000 to hire Iser, who is the previous organization that did the previous two school costs, or district cost differential studies. And they reached out to Iser and had some meetings there, but they encountered some difficulty in that Iser did not want to do the study unless it was requested by the state legislature. I found that concerning and reached out to the folks at Department of Education and did get to talk directly to the commissioner about this. And the commissioner's position was that, that Department of Education would not endorse the municipality's request to Iser to have the study done because they felt it was the responsibility of the legislature to ask for the study to be done. That was disappointing because the study is, as we all know, overdue. And so I did have some very positive discussions with the folks over at Iser and the university. And they said, well, if you could identify where, just, not just, it's not just coming from Anchorage, that there's support from it from other areas. And I said, well, last year, the Alaska Association of School Boards passed a resolution saying that we were overdue and we needed to do a new district cost differential study. And they said they didn't know that. So I provided that information to them. Hopefully, that will influence their decision about whether or not they're willing to proceed to actually do the study. Also discovered that there's a cost component to this and it, it's a little bit frustrating to me because we're talking about half a billion, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money here statewide every year. And we're, we're talking about a study that's going to be $100,000 to $150,000. It's, it's some tiny percentage of 1% for the annual expenditure the state makes on education and supporting school districts. So it seems completely reasonable to do this, you know? This is not a big expenditure relative to the hundreds of millions of dollars that are involved annually. But Iser has a contract with the state where they charge a 25% overhead. But with the municipality of, municipality of Anchorage, it's something like 51.5%. And nobody knew exactly why that was, it'd just been negotiated sometime in the past. So it actually would cost about another $25,000 if it's the city asking for it versus the state asking for it. So we could save a bunch of money if the state would just ask for it, but at this time, they're refusing to do so. So that's where the negotiations or the discussions are and I just wanted to give a board an update on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Dave. I had one other thing this, well, last couple of weeks or so. I've had individuals ask me in our Go Math, why we skip around in the book. And I did not have a good answer for them because I don't know. But maybe if, at our next work session, we could just have somebody come and talk to us a little bit about the math curriculum. I think that would be great. Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, well, I think we are ready to move to our best part of the evening, which is recognizing staff, students and community. And don't forget, we have to come back.
Should we turn all these off for math? I had to get up, too. My legs are like, ugh.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I'll go ahead and get started. My name is Deana Bishop, and I serve as the superintendent of the Anchorage School District, along with the school board and our president, Star Marsette. This is right before she ended our last work session. She said, now we get to start the best part of the meeting. And we say that because this is a time to focus on staff and students. And it's been a very deliberate effort of our board to celebrate the people who make ASD great. Those are our students, our staff, our parents, and community. So without further ado, Michelle Carton, please come forward. Is Michelle here? We'll go to the next one. I know these folks are here. Daniella Ria, please come forward, as well as Jacob Barra in the house. Is Jacob here from Eagle River High School? I haven't seen him. Well, I'll share about Daniella and Jacob. They have both been named finalists for the 2019 Alaska Teacher of the Year. Please note that there are approximately a little over 8,000 teachers in the state of Alaska that could have been nominated and been moved up as Teacher of the Year. Each district of 53 then chooses their teacher that they want to present forward, and two of our teachers have made the five finalists. The National Teacher of the Year program began in 1952 and continues as the oldest, most prestigious national honors program that focuses on public attention on excellence in teaching. And Jacob just arrived. He's in the house. Here he is. So these two excellent teachers, names were moved forward from all around the state, and they actually have also made the top finalists, two of the five. And they had to go through a pretty rigorous application, interview, radio talk. So they were put through the wringer, pretty much. So it was good. They both did fabulously. But a candidate for the Teacher of the Year is an expert in their field who guides students of all backgrounds and abilities to achieve. They collaborate with colleagues, students, and families to create a school culture of respect and success. They deliberately connect classrooms and key stakeholders to foster a strong community. They demonstrate leadership and innovation in and outside the classroom, and they express themselves in engaging and articulate ways. Alaska Native Charter Cultural Charter School teacher Daniella helped develop the curriculum for an open, and opened the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. She has taught middle school for 10 years and implemented the morning gathering and Culture Week at ANCCS. Jacob has been teaching art in the Anchorage School District for 15 years. He serves as the Fine Arts Department Chair at Eagle River High School, building a comprehensive visual arts program that serves students of all abilities, including a successful AP Arts Studio Program. And he organizes an annual event called the Fine Arts Cabaret, which celebrates the creative efforts of all his students. I also know personally, because I visited his classroom, he was given an award as a student. They make many, many bowls for Beans Cafe Soup Kitchen. So they raise quite a bit of money, and they make thousands of bowls there. Congratulations on your nominations as Teacher of the Year finalists, and thank you for your hard work and dedication. And the winner out of the five finalists from around the state will be out within 10 days, and we just can't wait to find out. Would you like to say anything?
Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, first of all. And I know, and we've talked about this, we couldn't do it without all of you, all of our team teachers, our parents, and our kiddos. And so, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I would say that I'm a product of the teachers I work with. I've learned a lot from them. And my wife is in the back with my family, and she's a teacher as well. And I can tell you that I'm able to do the things that I do because she's at home watching kids and just helping keep things moving. And so I appreciate that.
All right. And one of the touching things that I know, you both have personal connections to the kids in your classroom. And we think about teaching of curriculum and students and programs, but really, they both add to the personal touch. And I saw that in your classroom, as well as Jacob's, and I've just had personal visits. You know, Jacob brings snacks to his class for kids who, you know, didn't have lunch that day. So being excellent educators, it is more than a grade or a subject. It is really the lifeblood of ASD, having such wonderful people here. So thank you, and I can't wait to find out. I know you're both great, so thank you. And I know that we have Alaska Native Cultural Charter School principal here. Is Eagle River High, would he happen to be here? I didn't see him. Tim or Derek? Nope. Is it okay? Okay. And can the Service High School Partners Club please come forward? We have lots of members. Service High School is a model program for the Special Olympics Alaska Unified Champion School Program and is being nationally recognized as a Unified Champion Banner School. The Unified Champion School, receiving national banner recognition, is one that has demonstrated commitment to inclusion by meeting 10 national standards of excellence developed by a national panel of leaders from the Special Olympics and the education community. In addition to being presented with a Unified Champion School banner, and this is really exciting, Service High School was recognized as an ESPN Top 30 Honor Roll School of Inclusion. Congratulations. And I believe the co-presidents of the Partners Club, if you are here, co-presidents, please come forward. We thought that no one could speak to the Partners Club better than the co-presidents themselves. And I've heard them speak, I've visited their classroom as well for lots of their engagements. So share, but if you can introduce yourselves first.
Hi, I'm Sierra Helwig. I'm a senior.
And my name's Emma Broyles, and I am also a senior. And we are the co-presidents of Partners Club this year, and we are really excited. So we, first of all, like to thank all of you guys for being here. This is such a huge honor for all of us, not only as a Partners Club, but our entire school and our community as well. We just like to say thanks. And we really are so proud to see the strides that our community has been making towards inclusion. And we really feel that Partners Club is a great way, and it's a great catalyst for social inclusion within our community.
We also hope to have not the thought of inclusion not to end in our classroom, but hopefully, we can spread it throughout our own community.
And hopefully, the goal is that our other schools in Alaska can become national representatives of Special Olympics through the Banner School Program. And so hopefully, we'll be able to see other schools getting this recognition as well. And so we're just really excited. So thank you all.
Congratulations. And I did want to ask, how much money did you raise for Polar Plunge last year? And how many of you took the actual plunge? Woo, all right. I know there was quite a bit. So would anyone else like to speak? We have some teachers in the back. Would you like to share? And, all right, so we're going to take a picture with them, but this is phenomenal group of young people that do great things for other people, young people as well. And Mr. Hauser's here. Thank you. And this is the youngest Cougar fan. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I would like Stellar Secondary School principal, as well as faculty, please come forward if you're in the room. We have some strong faculty members here. Ladies and gentlemen, Stellar Secondary School has been named a 2018 National Blue Using standards of excellence evidenced by student achievement, the Blue Ribbon Program honors public and private elementary, middle, and high schools where students achieve very high learning standards or are making notable improvements in closing the achievement gap. Stellar Secondary School, a lottery-based school of choice within the Anchorage School District, offers an alternative to traditional education. Stellar has up to 300 students in grades seven through 12 from across the Anchorage attendance area. The primary emphasis of Stellar's program is attaining an education through responsibility to self and to a democratic process of setting school policy and procedures. Students play an integral role in all aspects of the program, from planning and scheduling activities, monitoring and assisting younger students, designing coursework in units for independent study, as well as peer-taught classes, to aiding in the selection of teaching staff and the content evaluation for regular education curriculum. Congratulations to all the staff, students, and families of Stellar Secondary School. You make ASD and our community great. And I would like to see if you would like to say a few words. The principal in this program actually gets to travel to DC with a staff member and accept this award. And I want to share that this is my 29th year in education, and it's very few and far between for a secondary school to achieve Blue Ribbon status. It's more difficult because of the metrics used to determine that progress. So I want everyone to know that this is literally a huge, big deal for this school and their hard work and student progress to be, move the school forward and to be recognized on the national level is a major, big deal for a secondary school. And I'm so proud to say I work with such great folks. So I'll pass the mic.
Well, I just, I'd just like to say that I was fortunate enough, in fact, Jason and I were fortunate enough to go to Stellar. And so it's been a long time coming. So that's been pretty nice, and I've always liked the idea of the academic freedom, and we'll pass that on.
So we just want to thank, like, we recognize we teach and work with amazing students like Reagan here, who is the head of our school student body government op group. And we work with amazing students and families that support education. And we have, you know, come into classrooms where students are eager to learn and creative in what they want to learn. And we are, just, our program really supports us being able to look at kids and develop curriculum around what's going to engage them. So just thankful to teach at a school that makes learning so easy.
Sure. Hi, my name is Reagan. I am an 11th grader at Stellar, and I've been going there since 7th grade. I just want to say that I'm so grateful that I get to be a part of a school where each individual has a voice that is valued and listened to, and each individual has the ability to make change and just, you know, a school where responsible freedom is implemented and valued.
So we're going to take a picture, but certainly, let's give them one more round of applause. Stellar with an E is certainly Stellar with an A. And now, ladies and gentlemen, our final focus on staff and students. Could Board President Star Marsette please come forward? Star Marsette did not know this was coming. So Board President Star Marsette has earned the Association of Alaska School Boards Basic Boardsmanship Award. Board members receive points by attending Boardsmanship Boardsman Academies, workshops, webinars, and AASB conferences. President Marsette's achievements will be recognized in November at the annual conference banquet dinner on Saturday, the evening of November 10th. Congratulations to her, and thank you for your hard work and support of ASD. And I know this was a surprise, you make ASD great. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
This was a big surprise. Well, you know, like I always say, there's seven on the board, and I'm only one, and the power is seven. And so that's just a reminder, it's not about one person, it's about all of us. Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our focus on staff and students. Have a wonderful evening and continue to do what you do, making ASD great. Thank you.
And board members, come back.
Did Michelle come in from Tudor? We'll add her next week.
Okay, well, we are going to adjourn and move into work session for the purpose of...